Start with the pledge allegiance. We'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Member Wolf.
Here.
Member Friend.
Presence, lots of presence.
It's noted that the Chair and Vice Chair are not present this evening.
That's good.
So procedurally, we do need to have one of you. We need an election for-
I move that Commissioner Wolf serve as pro-chair this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll move on. Okay, first item is the consent calendar, which includes the adoption of the agenda, the approval of the November 7 regular meeting minutes, and approval of the Joint Planning Commission and Recreation and Parks Commission meeting minutes. I wasn't at either of those, so I will have to abstain from the minutes approval.
I was not present at November 7. I would recommend to the Chair, at the pleasure of my fellow commissioners, that we hold approval of the minutes over until the other two members are here.
I agree.
But I yield to the pleasure-
That's fine.
So we'll hold the minutes approval from those meetings over until we have members that were at those meetings.
Move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, anything, well, there's not much to remove from the consent calendar unless it's tonight's agenda. So we're not going to do that. We begin item three, items of interest to the general public, i.e. for public comment not on tonight's agenda. And we begin with any oral communications. If people in the vast audience want to address the commission, here's your opportunity.
Good evening, Commissioner. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Well, thank you.
Happy days. Oh, see, I was wondering, I would like you to consider, because it's your prerogative to bring forward anything you deem within zoning, what have you, discuss it, maybe come up with a idea of changes to send to city council. You don't have to wait for staff to bring you something. You can bring it up on your own. I would request you consider changing the setbacks for fires in the city for burning of leaves and branches. Right now, it reads about 10 feet from fences, homes, structures and such. I live in a really tight neighborhood. I have a couple of neighbors that love to burn. And the whole little valley that I sit in just gets fogged in with smoke. It gets pretty bad. So, right now, if you increased it from 10 feet to 50 feet or whatever, then assert, then those really tight neighborhoods, we wouldn't have that problem. And I read the Eldorado disposal contract with the city. They are required to give you as many green waste cans as you need to take care of your green waste. So, those that might not have a pickup truck and do dump runs, they can request more green cans in the fall, have Eldorado disposal picking back up. So there really is no reason to burn. So, just a request, because it gets pretty bad in my neighborhood, and I'm sure other people have the same problem. And then, under SEQA, there's categorical exemptions, and we see it all the time with things. But there's also another section of SEQA that involves when it falls within a historic scenic highway, which is Highway 50, right through town. So, it says, "No categorical exemptions to SEQA within a scenic Highway 50." So if staff and planning commission can kind of work that out to see what's what, you know, because it seems to be a conflict right now. And that's it. Thank you.
Michael, I have a question. Oh, is there a max number on the green cans from Eldorado Waste?
The contract says, "The Eldorado disposal shall supply as many recycle and green waste cans as is required or necessary of the person paying for the service."
So when I call them and tell them I want 10 cans, they should be able to provide-
Under the contract language, that's what it looks like. Did you want that SEQA code number? Or should I just give it to staff after?
Just give it to staff, I guess.
Okay.
Read it into the record.
Oh, my glasses, oh my goodness.
While you're looking for it, Mike, I will comment on the fire. I don't know if Michael was referring to a fire hazard versus a smoke issue, but I do plan to comment a little on the fires under comments from commissioners and staff.
Okay, so in SEQA, Title 14, California Code of Regulations, Chapter 3. Awesome. Chapter 3, Guidelines for Implementation, Article 19, Categorical Exemptions, Section 15300.2, Exceptions. D, Scenic Highways, a categorical exemption shall not be used for projects which may result in damage to scenic resources, including but not limited to trees, historic buildings, rock outcroppings, or similar resources within a highway officially designated as a state scenic highway. So, just if we can get clarification on if that applies to every categorical exemption. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Written communications?
None from staff.
All right, thank you. I will move on to open the public hearings. First is item 4.1, 423 Main Street, a special temporary use permit for sidewalk dining, for a sidewalk dining area. It's a request by a business owner of Bene Restaurante Italiano, apologize for the pronunciation, at 423 Main Street for sidewalk dining area permit within the city's main street right-of-way adjacent to the business. Okay, we'll go ahead and hear staff report on the item first, please.
Sure, this item is before the commission under the city's sidewalk dining regulations, which is City Code Section 1049H. And what these regulations would allow for is the use of the sidewalk within the city's public street right-of-way along Main Street adjacent to a restaurant. In this case, the Bene Restaurante Italiano business for outdoor sidewalk dining. Mr. Ben Butler, who is in the audience this evening, is the request applicant and owner of this business. His proposed sidewalk dining area would consist of four square metal tables with two metal chairs per table. There's also a barrier that would be separating the dining area from the public walkway along Main Street, which would consist of a 36-inch tall and 12-foot-in-length decorative wrought iron fence. The layout would provide a minimum of five feet of unobstructed pathway between the barrier fence and the existing trash receptacle and streetlight, streetscape furniture that currently exists on Main Street. The barrier would also be a minimum of seven feet from the street curb. A matching gate with opening would provide accessible access to this outdoor sidewalk dining area. All tables and chairs would be removed from the outdoor dining area and stored within the restaurant after the restaurant's 10:00 PM closure each night. The existing storefront soffit lighting would illuminate the dining area and outside the restaurant during the evening hours till closure. The restaurant is located within a three-story brick building called the Old Town Center. It's also known as the Masonic Building. This structure was built in 1893. It is listed on the city's historic resource inventory. The sidewalk dining design is consistent with the general plan policies that promote the development within and improving the economic vitality of downtown. The sidewalk dining furniture and barrier design would enhance the streetscape. There are no physical changes to the building, and therefore, no physical impacts would occur to the city's historic resource. The request, as designed and analyzed by staff and as conditioned under the sidewalk dining regulations, the development and operational standards meet the intent, so this request meets the intent of those regulations. The placement of chairs, tables, and wrought iron barrier are considered minor accessory structures for an existing commercial business. Their proposed use, therefore, is categorically exempt from environmental review under Section 15311 of the SEQA guidelines. Public notice for this request was published in the Mountain Democrat, and property owners within a 500-foot radius were mailed notices. As of this moment, the city has received no public comment regarding this request. Staff recommends the commission adopt a staff report as part of the public record. Make the findings that the request is categorically exempt from SEQA per Section 15311 of the guidelines. Find also that the request meets the purpose and intent of the sidewalk dining regulations by allowing a limited encroachment of outdoor dining within and into the public right-of-way, which is ancillary to the adjacent food and beverage establishment where the development layout is proposed, and conditionally does not unduly restrict public access or detract from the appearance of the surrounding area. And staff recommends to conditionally approve this request, which is Special Temporary Use Permit 17-04, subject to the conditions of approval provided as Attachment B. Temporary, Chair Wolf, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. The applicant wish to address the commission?
Yes, good evening. My name is Ben Butler, owner of Bene Restaurante Italiano, 423 Main Street. Happy holidays to start off. And yes, I do believe it's fair and reasonable for the request. I believe it enhances Main Street. The dining experience is almost extraordinary from the response I get from our patrons. I believe it fits well on Main Street as far as the theme, the design. There's actually wine grapes, branches and grape clusters made out of metal, kind of give it a little more aesthetics to it. It's not just a plain jane wrought iron fence. So there's a lot of thought and design went into it, which I believe helps the, kind of enhances the wine country theme. Don't really feel or see any negative impact with its presence there. And with that, just based on that, then that's my request to have a permission to 12-month permit to allow that to sit on the property and the sidewalk of Main Street.
You've been doing this a while with the street dining. You must be starting to feel like the Thomas Jefferson of street dining in Placerville. Any other questions of the applicant before we bring back to us?
Do you have any plans to use the outdoor dining during the winter months? Will you be adding a heater or anything like that for customers?
Definitely, it's crossed my mind more than once. It's, I don't have any tentative plans at the moment, but it would be nice. It's just really restricted with how much power it would take, because it has to be an electrically powered heat source as opposed to gas-fired. So, the draw is, I've done a lot of research in the past on it, and it would create a huge amount of draw on the electrical panel. I don't know if it would sustain that much draw in amperage, but it is feasible. Most things are possible with a lot of time and money, but this is a pretty good challenge to heat it appropriately, you know, in the wintertime, electrically. But I'm all for it, for sure.
Let's see, it's been a few days since I went by your establishment, but do you still have the tables and chairs out, like on Saturdays when it's pleasant? So you're using this kind of as weather allows?
Oh, absolutely, 100%. We put them out every single day when we're open. We're closed every Tuesday, but-
But you're not, at this point, not considering heating the space, just keeping the tables and chairs as-
Yeah, even today, with today's weather conditions, when it's clear and sunny without wind, it's still packed. I mean, people still sit there, you know, the sun still beats down on it. So it's enough, you know, in the winter where it feels great, as opposed in the summer where it beat you up with the sun. But it is nice, and it, you know, helps to, on a tangent with the stagecoach rides, you know, people love sitting in the patio watching the horses and the events, you know. So it's still very popular on a sunny day. Evening, it's a little chilly.
Gli buoni d'alle.
Sorry?
Italiana. Question, just to follow up on the heating, what prohibits you from using a propane heater?
According to the fire marshal, he states that a fire source from a solid or liquid fuel source has to be a minimum of five feet from the face of the building, which would put it-
Okay, and because you're underneath, you're essentially underneath, you can't do that.
Right.
All right.
Unfortunately, yeah.
That's unfortunate, yeah.
Yeah, I even discussed it with him on alternatives, just brainstorming, maybe some type of vented hood or some description to capture the heat and whatever the danger might occur.
Even if it's ground-mounted, because they have some floor-mounted propane units.
That's correct, yep. But anything with an open flame is, has to be a minimum of, even, including those like tiki lamp style.
Yeah.
Even those have to be a minimum of five feet from a structure.
Okay. I'm going to bring you to Attachment B. This may be a question for staff. Condition H, use of sound amplification. Do you have any music there at all? I'm thinking soft music, à la Lady and the Tramp, or some other gentle italiano. Do you have anything out there right now?
Yes, it's very light.
Okay.
Hardly hear it.
So, this is really a question I'll direct to staff, because I don't know if that falls under Condition H, and I would argue that it wouldn't. So, because I would think that's fairly important to the ambiance of the theme.
Absolutely is, yeah.
Yeah.
Creates a better atmosphere and-
All right, well, I'll have to bring it up with staff after we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Thank you, sir.
I move to approve this. It's a fantastic addition to Main Street, and he's done a fantastic job. That was a good question on the heating, because when you were discussing the ordinance itself, I can't recall that that was addressed. We discussed eight-foot head clearance from umbrellas and any other thing, and all kinds of other things, not blocking access to water meters that might be in the sidewalk, so they can be read. The only condition I would like to see is one put on the city, is they just install that new dual trash can right in front of the outdoor dining here. So I would like to put the condition on the city that any approved outdoor dining, they must relocate those cans to a certain distance away, because I would not want to be sitting, enjoying my meal outside, right next to a nice city receptacle. So, that's the only condition. City move the garbage can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to redirect my question to staff. Condition H in Attachment B regarding the specific conditions, we talk about amplification. Amplification, to me, is loud. Okay, so we can pick a decibel number. But if there's gentle music that's easily drowned out by the motorcycles and vehicles going by, that doesn't intrude, and we could probably do a decibel metric map, just like we do a photometric map, like a nice photometric map for the next agenda item, by the way. It would seem to me that that's integral to the theme of this particular establishment, would be appropriate. And I just want, I want to ask staff's interpretation as to whether or not what they're doing presently is a violation of Condition H, or if Condition H is really talking about something else, and if it is, if there's a way for us to quantify it so that we're clear and objective on the enforcement thereof.
The intent of the section of the code, and what I'm doing now is I'm referring to the sidewalk dining section of the ordinance, which is 10-4-18-F-H. Use of sound amplification on the exterior of a sidewalk dining area is prohibited. Basically, the city was, wants to make sure that we don't have battle of the outdoor speakers.
Correct.
Because basically, that's prohibited. That's public space. And so, what we're trying to look at here is reasonableness, no harm, no foul. So, when I'm standing at the adjoining business, I don't hear those speakers. Those speakers are only audible from the patrons sitting inside the outdoor dining. So it's very, very low. So, the way staff is going to interpret that is if the volume somehow gets turned up by a staffer, and then we can hear it across the street, or hear it, you know, at the adjoining businesses, it's too loud.
So, it would probably, again, trying to come up with some sort of an objective standard that, you know, we can measure across businesses, that if the outside sound system is simply an extension of the interior sound system, I can't imagine the sound system on the inside of the restaurant would be so loud as to be obnoxious, and therefore, should be even less obnoxious outside. So if the outside sound system is simply an extension of the interior sound system, that would be one way, unless, of course, we enforce things based upon complaints. That's how we operate, and that's fine. If somebody complains about how loud the music is, then we come by and we say, "The music's too loud, you got to turn it down." I guess that's how that would work. But I'm, but trying to preempt the city having to get involved, if we had just some sort of a standard that says, "The outside sound system shall simply be an extension of the inside sound system." And with a nod to your head, Ben, that's probably how it works. I would presume that whatever you have outside is probably what you have inside. Is that right?
Well, staff doesn't, you know, we don't have sound equipment, and typically requires a lot of training in order to operate the sound equipment and use of decibel recording equipment. So, again, we're trying, we're not trying to over-regulate this. We just want to make sure that the city has clear ability to have the patron, or to have the restaurant business, turn it down if it just happens to get too loud.
Okay, so I'll be satisfied if staff tells me that Condition H does not prohibit any sound outside, if that's not the intent of Condition H.
That's not the intent.
Okay, all right, I can live with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? None, the public hearing is closed, and I'm all for it. So, that's an easy one.
Well, I'd like to, are you calling for a motion? Make the motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, and make the findings as listed in the staff report, that the request is categorically exempt from SEQA, and the request meets the purpose and intent of the sidewalk dining regulations, and that we approve this request for 423 Main Street, Special Temporary Use Permit 1704, subject to the conditions or approval provided in the Attachment B of the staff report.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second.
I have some discussion.
Discussion?
So, this request is similar, if not identical, to what we did for El Centro, not that long ago, if I remember correctly. And we have, so we have two businesses almost adjacent to each other with the same type of use. Again, no problem with that. I just want to, I just want to be on record as cautioning that we don't get to a point where there's an incentive to close Center Street and the alley, and the turnaround at the bell tower. And I worry, and so, worry is a strong word. I just want to make sure that the motoring public, of which I am one, and I use it a lot, has the ability to use that for turning, and the stagecoach comes there, and I wouldn't want to see anything impacting the stagecoach and other things. So I'm just, just for the record, okay, not related to this project specifically, or El Centro specifically, but looking at aggregate accumulations, as we've seen over the years, Commissioner. You know, just throwing that out there, and for city staff as well. I don't see the newsstand putting outdoor seating, although, you know, an outdoor reading room with coffee could work, and next thing you know, the area gets closed. So that's the only thing I'm concerned about. Other than that, completely in support of the project and the motion.
All right.
Duly noted.
All right, I'll call the question. Signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And presence.
Unanimous. All right, good luck. We'll be there next week. Okay, we're moving on to item 4.2, public hearing on 73 Main Street, a site plan review related to the existing Kentucky Fried Chicken. This is a request to, for an exterior re-image, including colors, awnings, exterior lighting, and removal of the pyramid shroud on the cupola of an existing Kentucky Fried Chicken restaurant, which we're all familiar with. Is the, we'll start with a staff report, please.
Yes, as you summarized there, tonight's request involves exterior improvements that would alter the appearance of a previously approved site plan review back in 1979, and amended in 2001 for the Kentucky Fried Chicken business at 73 Main Street. These improvements are classified by staff as a major change to the site plan review, and under Section 1049, he is in Paul of the zoning ordinance, a major change to an approved site plan review may only be approved by the planning commission after a public hearing. The applicant is Len Leest, who represents Kentucky Fried Chicken. Attachment A of staff's report contains the applicant's submittal information. The improvements include painting the exterior of the business using vertical color bands of Rembrandt Ruby, which is a red, and pure white. The building trim colors would be iron ore, which is a black color, and wedding veil, which is a kind of an off-white. Removal of existing awnings would take place with this request, and replaced with shuttered awnings with an exotic red exterior color finish. Now, the colors that I've just described are on the color board behind you. I think copies were provided to you as part of your packet. The request also includes a removal of the existing decorative light fixtures that currently exist on the building, replacing them with wall-mounted sconce fixtures with black color finish. Light sources for these fixtures would be energy-efficient LEDs. New roof-mounted fixture, lighting fixtures would be added above each window and shuttered awning, and above the cupola mug, which is a graphic showing the kernel, kernel graphic on the, I believe it's the north and the east face of the building. Each has a mounting bracket, an arm, and an LED fixture. Fixer bracket, arm, and luminaire would have a black color finish. There's a pyramid shroud on the cupola, and the applicant has proposed to remove that aspect of the roof. The site is located within the Central Business District, or CBD. It's at the intersection of Canal and Main Street, south of US 50, and Hangtown Creek is adjacent and north of the site. Staff evaluated the request under the city's site plan review criteria, the city's exterior lighting regulations, general plan goals and policies, as well as the development guide. The request, as staff has conditioned, would enhance the commercial site in a manner that furthers the general plan, community design policies, site plan review criteria, as well as development guide guidelines. The contemporary appearance of the exterior light fixtures appears consistent and compatible with the contemporary design of the existing 1970s-era building architecture. The indirect lighting armatures share similarities to those used at the Buttercup pantry, the Tortilla Flats restaurant, as well as the recently closed Z-Pipe business, which is across from City Hall. They're all located within the Central Business District. The applicant photometric analysis, however, revealed that light intensity levels at the ground level within the eastern, approximately one-fifth of the site, which is where Canal and Main Street intersect, the levels shown on this analysis would exceed the 0.3-foot candle maximum, which is the threshold within the city's lighting regulations. Staff has conditioned this request to require the submittal of a revised photometric analysis and revisions to the light source to lower that light intensity level, and staff would review that for consistency with the site, and, excuse me, the city's light intensity regulations, should the commission go forward and approve this request. The proposed red and black colors are consistent with the city's- The proposed red and black colors are consist, are consistent with the city's guidelines related to earth tones. They're consistent with the site plan review design criteria, as well as the development guide language that describes the earth tone preference for color palettes. The new awnings and their supports are metal, and therefore are durable, they're weather-resistant, and the, this too is consistent with the site plan review design criteria, as well as the development guide. The removal of the pyramidal, I can't even say that very well, the cupola shroud would result in the building having a common roof parapet design. So, once again, the pyramid-shaped cupola would, portion of it would be removed, and what it would look like would be the, the remainder of the building, which just has a, a raised parapet along the exterior. Pages three and four of staff's report describe other work that is being proposed by, on the site by KFC, and the, but these are considered minor changes, and are therefore not required planning commission to review and approve. These include like-for-like sign changes, as well as the interior remodel of the business. Staff also looked at site plan review conditions from the 1979 and the 2001 era, as, as analyzed, conditions one, two, and five from 1975 remain, excuse me, 79, remain in effect, and they are carried forward with this request, should the commission approve the request, and are, would be renumbered as conditions 11A, 11B, and 11C within Attachment B. The site is approximately 150 feet west of the address of 82 Main Street. 82 Main Street contains an existing structure constructed in 1860 approximately, and is listed on the city's historic resource inventory. The historic name for the inventoried site is the O'Keefe Residence and Toll House. From staff's, staff's opinion that the request tonight would not have a detrimental impact on that historic resource, as analyzed in staff's report. The request was also reviewed for exemption from environmental review under the California Environmental Equality Act guidelines, and the guidelines clearly allow for minor alterations proposed to an existing structure, and those were determined by staff to qualify as a category exemption under Section 15301A of the SEQA guidelines. Staff recommends the commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make findings A through F on page five of staff's report, and conditionally approve this request, which is 79, SPR 79-07-R, subject to the conditions of approval contained in Attachment B. Temporary Chair Wolf, there is a representative in the audience this evening to, to address any questions you might have regarding this request by KFC.
All right, thank you. Like to come up and address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Lozini, and I represent Len Lees, the applicant in the KFC matter. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Brevity is the soul of wit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I don't.
Do you? I have questions.
The only question I have, I'm a little, I'm unclear on how the color scheme goes together. The, the brighter red that's shown at the far right of the palette?
The exotic red, yes.
That, is that an accent, or is that the main color that's going to be used?
That is an accent color.
An accent color.
The, let's see, it is outlined, yes, the awnings. If you look at item two in the, under the request on the application, the exotic red, which is the exterior, that's the name of the color.
The awnings.
Yes, that is for the awnings.
Okay.
Okay.
And the, the more rust color, that's for the body of the, the building?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. You got off easy there.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll yak about this for a few minutes. So, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just want to say thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Questions of staff?
I, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So, I want to go back to the photometric if I can, Andrew, and I'm happy to see a photometric analysis, as a few projects have come to us not that long ago that had none. First question I want to ask is, is the orientation, as indicated in this, in terms of the compass, correct?
No, it is not.
It's not correct, is it?
South is to the top of the bridge.
And it wasn't until, it wasn't until your staff report that I realized, oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's, it's also missing some other details, such as streets that are adjacent to it, as well as the creek would, would also provide reference to that, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. So, and I don't know if we're concerned about how much light gets down to the Hangtown Trout, but, so the lighting to the east is what staff has some concern about, but that is also illuminating.
The entry area.
Yeah, hold on. Canal, thank you very much. I was drawing a blank. It's also illuminating Canal Street. This is not beneficial to motorists and pedestrians on that particular stretch of street. So, I, I just want, I want us to look at this in, in the totality, and not just as a parking lot, per se. And, and so I'm wondering if there isn't, in fact, some benefit to pedestrians in that area, number one. And then, number two, this is, what's of particular interest to me with this is, we have the highway, we have the traffic lights, whether you're going east or west. You also have a drop-down elevation from Highway 50 down to this location, and there's lighting from the 76 station. I'm just wondering if maybe this actually isn't compatible with the whole situation there. And I, I would defer to staff to take a look at it and say, you know, given everything that's going on here, and perhaps some unplanned benefits, as opposed to an isolated parking lot, that perhaps this is, in fact, okay. So, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a response. Member Friend, the staff did look at that aspect, and we somewhat agree with, with what you're saying. Could an intersection be further illuminated to assist those pedestrians that are walking across the street? And/or just illuminating an intersection as a concept is, is a positive thing. However, I will direct you to, even the photometric analysis shows the location of street lighting that exists on the bridge. So, it's staff's opinion that it might be a little redundant to have additional lighting in excess of what we would normally require.
So, what would it require to, to reduce the amount of lumens that we're seeing here?
It's possible that they may have to go with a different luminaire lamp.
On the exterior?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on the photometric, and perhaps the, the representative tonight can address this, but if you look at the intensity level adjacent to the building, it's clearly, it's the exterior lamps that are attached to the roof are the ones that are generating the high-intensity levels. It's not the sconces that, that are proposed.
Okay, and so now that I have the correct compass orientation in my photometric, we are talking about the lamps that are up high on the highest point of the fixture, correct?
Those must be the ones that are reaching out towards the property boundaries.
And have you had a conversation with the applicant about possibly reducing the lamp wattage, then? Is it, is it a matter of wattage, or is it an issue of a different style? What conversations have we had?
Well, typically, the, the fixture cut sheet is in your report. I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but.
I do.
Typically, they do have a, various levels of, of wattage that can be put in a lamp, and that doesn't reflect the exterior appearance of the fixture. It's just changing the bulb out to, so that's one solution. The other solution potentially would be to look at an alternative fixture that might be different than what, what's proposed tonight.
Well, the first solution sounds like the easiest. So, the question directly, have you had that conversation with the applicant?
We, we have not. Staff, staff feels that, that they could come up with revised, I think, very easily, and submit to us for our analysis, and if the commission likes the concept of what's being proposed tonight, staff felt that we could handle it at our level, should you approve in concept the, the fixtures themselves.
So, I'm looking at the applicant, and all I need is a, a nod, a yes. So, I'm getting a, a yes nod from the applicant for our, okay, so the vast viewing audience knows what's going on. Okay, so I'm good with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, it just, I may not have the slightest idea what I'm talking about, but it looks like the, looking at the photometric study, the, the values on the east side of the building and on the south side of the building, which is sort of, I guess, is about where the doubled entry is right now, that's pretty hot, the way this is set up. It's, you know, it's four or five times the lighting on the building than the rest of the area.
Correct.
So, that's going to be, that's going to be hot, in terms of the intensity of it. So, you might want to just take a look at that, since you're going to revisit the lighting, probably.
We could certainly get with a revised photometric plan showing, you know, other notations on their exhibits, such as streets and the creek, et cetera.
That helps keep the chicken warm after you've picked it up and you're going to your car, particularly on these cold winter nights.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions?
Oh, wait, we closed the public hearing. So, you have to reopen the public hearing, what, reopen the public hearing?
Oh, you missed your chance. Maybe I didn't give you a chance. We'll reopen it for comments.
The rest of the public was not invited to, to speak.
My bad.
Just, I would like, going forward, that these items that are within the view shed from scenic Highway 50 corridor, there's a statement in there. I mean, you make a finding that, you know, exempt under SEQA, you make a finding that it meets the general plan, you make all these other findings, that this is within the scenic Highway 50 corridor, and it's appropriate, or it's within 300 feet of a historic resource, and it's appropriate. The, like you were saying, all this light, how much is, we were really concerned about Toyota's new entry. How much light was this thing going to put out? So, I imagine staff's going to come in, and if they say the music is too loud, they can come back and say, "The light's too bright, so turn it down." But I think we knew, do need to make a finding that it's appropriate in our scenic corridor and in our historic district. That's all, thanks.
Any other members of the public that I inadvertently slighted? All right, we'll close the public hearing a second time, and bring it back to the commission. Anybody ready to make a motion?
Oh, sure, I'll, I'll move, I'll move, and I'll comment on, on the last comment. I have to find my agenda item specifically, make sure I've got the correct. I have to admit that while the new form of staff's reports are really tight and awesome, my brain is still used to the old format, so I go looking for the, so, I, well, I'm, yeah, I have to even find what the, this is Site Plan Review 7907-R, correct? Did I got that right? Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we approve, approve the Site Plan Review 7907-R for the property at 73 Main Street, which is a reimagining of the present Kentucky Fried Chicken as presented in the staff report, and make sure I have all the exhibits, since I have a B, there must be an A, exhibits A and B.
Yes.
With the conditions, except the findings and conditions as stated in the report. That's my motion.
Thank you, I'll second it.
If it's deficient, you can correct it.
Sure. Any other discussion?
I do want to add, just a discussion, just going back to the first point, this is an interesting situation, because I totally support the scenic highway, but we have a scenic highway that butts up immediately against a commercial, highway commercial district. I mean, they're, they're right there together, and we have to balance the two components between them. And the photometric, to me, just, just to be specific to this project, the photometric, when we get to the highway, except at the intersection, and the pedestrian components, which I think actually warrant additional lighting, they're all zero or, or minimal. So, I'm, I'm not concerned about the lighting as, as, as is projected here. I appreciate the comment and raising the issue, but I do want lighting as we get to, because there's a, there's a lot of competing lumens, and particularly at the Christmas trees and everything else in there. There's a lot of competing lumens at these intersections, and we got kids coming down from the high school and walking across, so I'm, I'm, I'm not too concerned about this. I think it's appropriate. And staff will, I, I support, if I have to amend my motion, that staff will work with the applicant to revise the, the photometrics to come within the acceptable levels as required. I'll make that amendment.
Yeah, that's a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a movement on the floor to approve. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Sorry, I'm on call. Sorry, I'm on call for, I'm on call.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Temporary Chair Wolf?
Aye.
Member Kinney?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you for the public comments. I know it was real stressful for the applicant, but we got through it.
Thank you so much.
All right.
If I may, just approach, so, if I'm understanding correctly, the application then would be approved with a condition that we, that Len Lees work with the commission on behalf of the, in terms of the wattage?
Yeah, you got to work with the staff. You got to come back with your lighting plan again.
We're nicer than the staff. You get to work with them.
Okay, so we do need to come back with a new plan just for the exterior lighting?
Right, and that can be submitted with your construction permit.
Minor adjustments from, possible just different bulbs, if what I, if what I understood from staff.
Okay, so, so with the construction plan, we could submit the new wattage? Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Happy holidays.
All right, we'll move on to item five, new business. Item 5.1, Planning Commission Bylaws Review and Amendment. And if memory serves me, we got to have everybody here to do that.
That's correct.
So, we'll table that one. We move on to item six, matters from commissioners and staff.
So, I, I'll yield my time to the lady from the north. So, the, the issue actually I want to bring up was tangentially alluded to in public comment, and you just heard possibly my, my phone going off, because I'm, I'm on call at the, at the moment, and it has to do with, with the fire danger. And I, I brought this up in previous meetings dealing with tree mortality and so on and so forth. The Skirball Fire in Southern California, which was the fire that threatened the Getty Museum and burned several homes in Bel Air, was determined by fire investigators to have been started by homeless camps, okay? And I am, I'm going to go on record, and, and I'm going to be fairly vocal about this moving forward, that we have to have an absolute zero tolerance for anyone camping or sleeping in, in public or even private property, that the risk is just far too great for our communities. We look all around, there are still tons of dead trees, and even if there weren't, Placerville has a history of fire. The county can't afford this, and we're going to have to become fairly aggressive about enforcement and policies about not allowing people to camp wherever they want to camp. And I don't mean to sound discompassionate, because I'm not at all. We have to come up with a solution, but a big part of that solution is going to have to be enforcement. Because what we've seen across the state, and the programs that I work with on a daily basis that have been called into play, what we've seen across the state is, is just an incredible example of just how vulnerable we are. So, this is a huge part of prevention, just as removal of, of dead trees and brush is, we're going to have to deal with this, and that's all I want to say. But thank you.
All right. Something we all have to think long and hard about. Anything else from staff?
Yeah, just some quick announcements here. Just that you're probably aware of, there was an article in the Mountain Democrat about the Hangtown Range was recently completed. That's a project that went through the planning commission for site plan review approval. Also, the city is excited to, we've been waiting quite a few years.
the city is excited to, we've been waiting quite a few years, and automatic extensions have granted the shelf life, so to speak, of a site plan review approved back in 2009. And this is concerning the Shell Station at 151 Main Street. And so you've probably seen the dumpsters out, permits been issued, they're moving forward. So city is very, very supportive of that, of that action and work. Also, the Domino's Pizza, which I believe came to you back in October, November, that's under construction. So they expect probably another few more weeks of getting that wrapped up, and then they'll be open. Also, the new owners of the CNH Auto Parts, they have approached the city about completing the work granted by the city council as to the loading berth for the adjacent piece west, excuse me, east of the 68, the CNH Auto Parts there, 618 Main Street, if I remember. I think we all remember that address. Let's see. Also, I'll make a comment about the following item, which is the photo. That, of course, won't happen tonight. We want to make sure all five of you are here. And I will let you know that since there were no items continued that are public hearing items, we will not be having a meeting on the 2nd of January. But a notice went out, in fact, it'll be in the paper tomorrow, for the item that was originally, the public hearing portion was started on November the 7th, and that concerns the general plan amendment and zone change for the 128-acre lot at the terminal end of Wiltsey. So that will be coming back to you on January the 16th, so the second meeting. We will be meeting here, the 16th of January, next year. And I'll turn it over to Director Rebus, if he's got additional items.
Just another couple of items. Just to call your attention, the previously approved tentative subdivision map was originally called Placavilla Estates. It's now called Estonia. It's located just downslope north of the airport. It's accessed via Texerna off of Broadway. It's a 39-lot residential subdivision. The property was purchased by a new developer, and they have submitted tentative improvement plans that the staff has reviewed and met with their engineers, and so they're going to resubmit and complete the improvements, and hopefully we'll have a subdivision built that they could finalize the map, and then we'll have 39 residential lots that'll be up for sale. Question?
Was there some multifamily component?
There was no multifamily component with Estonia, previously Placavilla Estates. You're probably thinking of Lumston Ranch. That project did have a multifamily component to it. Just to give you a quick update on the Hampton Inn and Suites, staff did complete its review of the building plans, and those comments have been submitted back to the architect. And staff also finished reviewing the on- and off-site improvement plans as well for that. So hopefully that project will continue to move forward.
Do they have a projected start?
We do not. We do not know if they have a projected start. It's the middle of winter, and I know they still have to make their final order for the modules out of Idaho. And so we're just basically anticipating, hopefully sometime this spring.
Questions of staff? Anything else? I think we can move to adjourn based on consensus. Thank you.
Under an hour.
All right.
I think you're our new chairman.
Were you here the time we had, I think you were gone, we did 11 minutes.
Really?
Always wanted to get back to that. 11 minutes.